Good afternoon, folks. It's Tuesday, June 17th, 2014. We're gathered here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. Our Granbury City Council meeting is now in order. I'd like to call upon my friend, Father Stuart Smith, with the Good Shepherd Angeles Church, to lead us in our invitation, followed by the pledge to the flag and then the Texas flag. All rise, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings of this life, of lived in a free nation, in a free state, and in a town where there are free elections. We treasure the freedoms that others in other parts of the world long for but have not yet received. Help us, therefore, to use this freedom wisely. And thank you for those who have been elected to serve as mayor and city council members. Ask that you would help them rise to the very best of the calling, give them the wisdom they cannot have without your help, help them in sorting through priorities to use what is best for the city in place of what may be their own desires. Give them the patience they need to deal with those of us who question them and criticize them. Help them to make decisions that will be a blessing to those who live with the consequences of them. And Lord, for those of us who are on the other side of the council table, who will live with our decisions, help us to keep them accountable and also to humbly acknowledge that we don't know we could do any better if we were in their seats. Help us to uphold them as we're able with prayer and encouragement. And so may all work that this little part of the world might be a microcosm of the Kingdom of God, where all hearts are raised to someone greater than the Almighty me. This we ask through Jesus our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one with safety, under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight's meeting is going to start out with a couple of presentations. The first presentation being by the Citizen Police Academy and alumni. I'd like to call upon them to come to the podium.
Howdy. I'm Paul Parker, president of the Citizen's Police Academy alumni. We are here to present a symbolic check to the city for $58,160.70 representing 24,886 hours of volunteer hours worked supporting the police department in the city. The Citizens' Own Patrol have helped with about half these hours, helped with several traffic accidents, actually caught a guy with a stolen vehicle and followed him until the police got there to pick him up. They were the ones that actually spotted him. The Citizen Police Camp has also raised $12,472 through our charity fund work last year. We sponsored a Christmas party for the police department and their whole family every year, as well as made donations to police officers' families that were hurt in serious events, such as Chad Davis and others. So, anyway, we just wanted to present this check, $58,160.
We do greatly appreciate what you folks do for us, and you see it at all the events and around town, and I know you've put in a lot of volunteer hours to do that, and we do appreciate everything you guys do. So, thank you very much for that. Our next presentation is a proclamation for the Clean Air Action Day. At this time, I'd like to call upon Michelle McKenzie to come to the podium, please. This proclamation reads, "Whereas air is essential for the survival of humans, animals, and plants, whereas human health and the health of our environment depends on the air quality, whereas one of the most common air pollutants is ozone, which can be harmful to the health of citizens of Granbury, whereas we are all stewards of our air quality, and whereas Air North Texas has designated the first Friday of summer as a day to foster long-term behavioral change across the region to help us all breathe cleaner air and build healthier communities in North Texas, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Granbury, Texas to proclaim June 27th, 2014, as Clean Air Action Day. In Granbury, and encourage all citizens of Granbury to try at least one of the following things for cleaner air in our region: carpool, bring lunch to work, bicycle or walk instead of driving." I like that one. "Avoid idling, avoid unnecessary trips, conserve electricity, and conserve your water." Thank you very much, Michelle. Michelle is the director of our Clean Air Coalition over at the EDC building. She works really hard to try to keep the air in Granbury where we stay out of the nine attainment. So, thank you very much for what you do, Michelle, and I'll present you with this proclamation.
Thank you.
Also, if you note down there in City Hall, at the desk, and around town, you can see these Clean Air Cards. So, if you get an opportunity, pick one of these cards up, and it's just a reminder of what we need to do to keep our air clean here in Granbury. The next item we're going to move into is consent agenda, that being the approval of the council meeting minutes, the Frederickburg debriefing of June 3rd, 2014, and the regular council meeting of June 3rd, 2014. Council, you had an opportunity to read through the minutes of the council meeting, and we all attended the debriefing. Are there any questions or concerns on either one of those items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda, the first item being to consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2013-14 fee schedule to include sponsorship package for Granbury TV. I'd like to call upon our Assistant City Manager, Sherri Hesmond Campbell, to give us a little background on that, if you would, please.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. At its May 28th meeting of this year, the City of Granbury's TV Advisory Board developed a new fee structure for TV station sponsorship and is recommending that council amend the fee schedule to adopt those fees. Now, the goal in establishment of these fees is to help the city and meet its Granbury TV revenue goals, both for the current fiscal year and the coming fiscal year, to reflect the revised production and broadcast format for the TV station, which really is going to feature local government meetings, both council and commissioner's court, GISD football and playoff sports as video programming, and other government and community information predominantly as scrolling text slides, and then continuing to meet our requirements under state and federal guidelines for educational programming, et cetera. It will also help us reflect a revised sponsorship structure that is going to emphasize sponsorship on radio broadcasts of GISD sporting events on KTRL radio, which is our arrangement with Tarleton, and for the ability of Granbury TV to promote the community events. The promotion and sales of the sponsorship packages really need to begin in advance of the coming school year before the football season starts, and so it'll give the opportunity for the local businesses to sign up in advance and have ample opportunity for appropriate advertising to be set up for them for all of their advertising and work this into their marketing plans. And so hence the need for the timing of doing this now as opposed to necessarily waiting until after budget adoption. But if you can see the schedule that's on your slide now, this gives you an idea of the four sponsorship categories that are recommended in the ordinance that is before you, rather, the fee schedule adjustment that was before you, has an all-parrot sports sponsorship, which is basically a sponsorship of all GISD sports for the full year at a cost of $2,500 per sponsor, a spring sports sponsorship, which would provide sponsorship for baseball and softball, and that's a rate of $495, a winter sports sponsorship, which is girls' and boys' basketball and girls' and boys' soccer, again, $495, and then to do event promotion. So, if your community group wants to do a promotion of your upcoming events, other than just putting it on our community calendar on the TV station, which would continue to be free, but this would involve some radio time, then that would be a $100 fee, and that would be done for up to 30 days in advance of your event. These are the fees that were recommended by the TV Advisory Board and that were recommended to you this evening for addition to the fee schedule. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Council, is there any questions or concerns for Ms. Campbell?
I got one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
Is that going to be 16 of each one of those?
16 of each one of those.
Just proposed ordinance would add to the fee schedule, Division 16, or how many of those are they going to sell?
My guess this answer is as many as we can.
Yeah, well, yes, that is the answer. The sort of baseline number would be 12 at $2,500, gets us the $30,000 that you guys set for the revenue target. We'd like to have that in the hand before the season starts, and then anything we get on top of that. Really, a lot of discussion when it comes to event promotion, because this is an event-driven community, and everybody has something that they want to promote, is to try to find an entry point into what we're doing for people that want to promote their event. And at $100, that's very interesting to folks. Now, do we know everything about how we're going to do event promotion? No. We know what we're doing radio sponsorship-wise with the $2,500 packages. The smaller package is something we're going to learn this year, whether it picks up or not. But that will all be gravy on top of the revenue targets if we get 12 at $2,500, which is the budget number that you guys set.
One of the reasons that the board, when we had this discussion with them, talked about that $495 rate for the spring sports sponsorship or the winter sports sponsorship is there may, in addition to our community businesses, there may also be families of the kids that play in those sports, et cetera, that might want to do sponsorships of the sports that their kids participate in, and that's a reasonable enough cost that they might be able to do that. So, that was one of the reasons for that price point.
Mr. Myers, have you got a good feel of what we're looking at? I mean, has there been some feelers out there, some people that, you know?
Well, I don't, anybody that we had last year absolutely expect that they will continue with us this following year, especially at $2,500 price target, which means we really only have four spots that we didn't already sell last year. Okay? And so, we do have to invent some things where we, right now, we have first-half sponsorships of timeouts. We may have to have, you know, first-down sponsor or whatever. We're making, I'll give you one example of a new one that we've come up with, and we're talking with Chicken Express about, is that you'll have the Chicken Express kickoff kit that goes out there and picks up the teeth after they kick off, and comes back off the field. We take their picture, and we stick it up on the television, and Mom and Dad are there, and everybody's happy, and we're just going right down the road, and everybody's all good with that. And so, obviously, a lot of logistics to work out with those kind of things, but those are some of the ideas that we're cleaning from other places, especially Stevensville, some of the things that they do, Alito, some of the things that they do. And we'll try some of them on. Some of them will work, some of them won't.
But you're saying, Kevin, you only have four spots right now open?
I was saying, we can invent as many as we want to. However, if you go off of what we had last year, where we had a first-half sponsor and we had a second-half sponsor, when they had a halftime sponsor, pre-game, post-game, scoreboard, you know, we started with eight last year. So, we need to add a few more that make sense, and then if those are well-received, we'll make a few that maybe don't make as quite as much sense, but still give them the opportunity to sponsor stuff. And the other big thing that Sherri doesn't know about, Wayne, Wayne and I have just very briefly spoke about this morning, got a phone call today from Tarleton, that they like what we've been doing, they want to continue to do it themselves, and with all Tarleton sports. So, one of the revenue opportunities that we're going to be talking about tomorrow is us having an add-on package for an existing sponsor to sponsor spots on Tarleton's radio side of the game, as long as that reduces our expense of our radio costs. And we have a $20,000 fixed cost, and so the first $20,000 that we were, people checked the boxes, an add-on, that first $20,000 reduces our expense, City of Granbury. So, we think that's, I believe that's a viable option.
Our sponsors will be having add on the Tarleton football broadcast, which is pretty cool. I mean, there's Tarleton graduates in Granbury that sometimes listen to the game, so.
Here's my thought on that. We've been losing money there, in which you've done a good job, Kevin, pulling us out of where we were three years ago. But if we got that kind of demand, should we be higher on the all-parrot sports sponsorship? Should we be $35 or $5 grand?
So, I can answer that. We were higher, and we got that money. And when we first started, we were asking $5,000 per spot and getting it. And because we absolutely didn't know anything about what we were doing, and making it up as we went along, the feedback we got from all of our sponsors is, hey, wait a minute. I'm paying $5,000, and y'all ain't quite getting me the product that I think I'm supposed to get. And so, you know, realities are, we're rebasing to a number and to a product that we feel like we can deliver on. And do I think there's plenty of room to go up from there in the future? Yes. But let's get to a product that we can sell and that we can deliver on and make sure everybody's happy, and next year, that number may change. We may come back with a revised fee schedule higher than what we have.
And another part of the answer to that question, council member, is that if you look at the matrix that's in front of you, it talks about what each sponsor would get for that in terms of their coverage on the radio station, on the TV station, the website, et cetera. And you notice that as far as the radio broadcasts, which is what our focus is going to be for these sponsorships, that the all-parrot sports sponsorship, what they're guaranteed is one 30-second spot per game. So, there's certainly room for us to have, well, more than 12 if we can come up with that many potential sponsors at that price. There's certainly room for us to have more than that, and we would love to exceed that $30,000 revenue mark if we can do so.
Thank you. Council, any more questions, concerns? Thank you very much. Well, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance amending that fiscal year 2013-14 fee schedule as recommended by the Granbury TV Advisory Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I got a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That ordinance is approved. Our next item is to consider, excuse me, consider appointments to the Tourism Advisory Board. I'm going to, first of all, call upon Assistant City Manager, Sherri Hesmond Campbell, again, to talk a little bit about this, and then we'll go through the applicants and try to get some nominations here.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tourism Advisory Board appointments are, as I understand it, being done at this point at a different time of year than the remainder of the board appointments, simply because of the timing of the ordinance recreating this board a couple of years ago, fell at a different time of year than the other appointments, and so the schedule for the appointment structure is a little different here. But the ordinance, 12/5/20, established the current board structure, which is a 10-member board, each representing a service area or industry impacting tourism. Because it is set up by the service industry you represent, residency is not the primary requirement here so much as meeting the requirement that you own or manage a business that falls into those categories or represent an organization that falls into the categories established by the ordinance. The Director of Communication and Marketing is a standing ex officio member of the board. Council appoints on an annual basis the chair of the board from amongst the 10 members that you appoint. That position is currently vacant. The current, who had been the board chair, Larry Cox, resigned his position just over a month ago, so his position and thereby the chairmanship are currently vacant. The terms of the board members are supposed to be staggered. The last time the appointments were done due to just what was a good old-fashioned administrative error, that was not done, and so all 10 members are up for appointment this evening. We are recommending that the staggering now be done as it is supposed to be by ordinance, and the spreadsheet that was provided to you in your staff report makes a recommendation of which seats would be three years and which would be two. I will readily admit to you that the choice about what those seats are was made entirely at random, literally by drawing seat numbers out of a hat, because we wanted that to be as fair a process as possible, and the ordinance doesn't specify by seat, which is three-year versus a two-year term to begin the process. In terms of the call for applicants for this year, just so you're aware, letters were sent to all of the current board members on April 7th of this year, and all but one of those current board members asked to be considered for reappointment. The current representative for HDMA has chosen not to seek reappointment. The notice was posted to the city website April 9th and ran until June 3rd, and a notice ran in the Hood County News on three separate occasions in April. Those were two column five-inch ads. They were substantial sizes, so they were readily visible to the public seeing the paper. The opportunity to apply was also discussed with a number of community members via various meetings of local organizations and just staff's daily interactions with the local merchants who fit into the various categories required for the ordinance, and so we let them know that the appointment time was here, and if they were interested, to let us know and to apply through the city secretary's office. So, that was our process. We are asking council to, for this evening, appoint one person to each tab seat, and to appoint for the term of office recommended on your spreadsheet in your packet that looks like this, and to designate a board chair from amongst those 10 appointees. Any questions before you begin your deliberations?
I will say that I was pleased with the turnout of applicants based off of what we've had before. We can do better, but I think we're headed in the right direction. We've got several people that were interested in this, so. And you have put the recommendations here, so council, if there's no more questions for Ms. Campbell, what I'd like to do is, first of all, we'll go through the candidates that have chose to stay on, or the new applicants, the single ones, and then we have two of them here that we have to make a decision between two of them that have applied. So, what we'll do right now, we'll start at the top, Ms. Sondra Walton, and you've all had an opportunity to read the applicants. If not, they're attached to this as we go through here. But Sondra Walton, member of the Chamber of Commerce, has applied for the position here. She will represent the chamber, and she is an incumbent. So, all in favor of Sondra? Oh, I need a motion, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, do I have a motion for Sondra to remain in that position?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any discussion on Sondra Walton? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Approving the recommended end of term.
Yeah, we're going to do that with it, I'm sorry, if it's okay with the council. The recommended terms, they've written out here, as you see, they're staggered from one year to the other, 17 and 16. And her recommended term will end in June 30th, 2017. Be yes. So, all in favor, say, let's see, we had, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So, Sondra Walton will be representing the Chamber of Commerce and a term expiring June 30th, 2017. The next one would be Diane Hedges, which will be representing the Historic Granbury Merchants Association, and her term will expire June 30th, 2016. Council, any discussion on this one? Do I have a motion to accept Diana Hodges as a new applicant? I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second by Councilman Couch?
Yes.
Any more discussion on Diane Hodges? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Diane Hedges will be filling the Historic Granbury Merchants Association position. You're just waiting on this one, aren't you, Kay? Kay Wasdewski. Okay, whatever.
Getting better.
She will be representing the Bed and Breakfast Association. What did that one person call her? They said Stan's wife. She will be representing the Bed and Breakfast Association, and she is an incumbent, and her expiration will be June 30th, 2016. Council, do we have any discussion on this one?
If I nominate, she won't hurt me. It's a lie, will you?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Aye.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Kay, you will be the next, you will serve as the Bed and Breakfast Association representative, expiring June 30th, 2016. The next candidate is Warren Ketterman, representing the Economic Development Corporation. He is a new applicant, expiring June 30th, 2017. Council, any discussion on Warren Ketterman?
Whose place is he taking, Mayor?
I think that's a new one. Blake Barker, I'm sorry, yes. Any more discussion, council? I'll entertain a motion to select Warren Ketterman as the Economic Development Representative.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Warren Ketterman will be the Economic Development Corporation representative, expiring June 30th, 2017. The next one is, and I've never called him this, but Louis Dutch Wilkinson. He will be representing the hotelers. He is the incumbent. His expiration will be June 30th, 2016. Any discussion on Dutch? I'll entertain a motion to select Dutch Wilkinson as the hoteler representative.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Perkel. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Dutch Wilkinson will be the hoteler representative, expiring June 30th, 2016. The next applicant is Kay Coleran, the restaurant owner and manager, incumbent. Hers will expire June 30th, 2016. Any discussion on Kay Coleran, council? I'll entertain a motion to select Kay Coleran as the restaurant owner-manager representative. I entertain a motion to select Kay Koloran as the restaurant owner-manager representative.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilperson Myers. Have a second? I have a second by Councilperson, Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We will now move down to the next one here, we'll, we'll skip the next two, and we'll come back to get them to select out of the four candidates. Our next applicant is named Ona Pruitt, which will be representing the Hood County Development District One. She's an incumbent. Her expiration will be June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Any discussion, council? Not, I entertain a motion to select Ona Pruitt as the Hood County Development District One Representative.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second? Have a second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ona Pruitt will be the Hood County Development District One Representative, term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. The next applicant is Jim Lynch. He's at-large. He's an owner on Lake Granberry, uh, lake, owner of Inn on Lake Granberry. He's a new applicant. His will expire June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Any discussion, council?
Jim Lynch, ready?
Pardon?
I've got a question, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
I think Jim's a great guy, but he's also on a, uh, one of other, another board also. Yeah. And we was gonna try to keep it where we'd only have him, one person per board.
Well, we, yes, we did try to do that, and as you know, when we went through the last session with this, we, and I spoke about it early in this, earlier here, that we were, we were trying to get applicants and didn't get enough applicants for a lot of them, and we ended up doing multiple ones, and a few, I think we got some cemetery people that are serving multiple boards, and some other, I don't, I don't think he's the only one right now. I think we still have a few, but what would we like to do is eventually get people where they're, we don't have multiple ones on here.
Well.
And I noticed we do have a couple of other.
Yeah, Kay, Kay was another one. She's on two boards.
That's what I'm saying, I think we still have them, and that, that came about because of not, the lack of a lot of, uh, single applications earlier.
But you know, I S.D., which is not here, but we do this, we need to run a half-page ad in the paper to let people know what we're needing, because it's not fair to these people that have been here for ten years. Be like us being the councilmen for twenty years, you know? People get tired of seeing me. That's, that's hard to believe, but okay.
Put it on the TV, right, yeah. And, and yes, I think we are working on some things to do a little, a, a better job. I think we're doing, we're getting it out there to people, because as you see, we had more applicants come in, but we want to do a better job and try to get a lot more applicants, so we can share the, share the people out there that wanna, wanna serve and wanna help out the community there. We had our last banquet, or we had a banquet here not too long ago, and we had a lot of folks showed up, and they had some concern of the friends and neighbors and other people that want to serve. So I encourage everybody to get their people out there that want to start somewhere and serve in the community, that this would be a good place.
And I did talk to Jim, Mayor, and he's very excited about serving on this board, so I think that if he has the enthusiasm to want to do it, then he'll, he'll serve properly on this board.
No, I think he'd do a great job, Dean, I think he does. I like Jim.
Yeah, there's, there's no doubt he would, yes. Council, any more discussion on Jim Lynch? If not, I'll entertain a motion to select Jim as the at-large, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Jim, we are new at-large, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Now we'll move back up to the entertainment industry and local attractions. With this applicant, we have two. We have Kent Whites, who is the owner of Granberry Theater Company, and we have Joel D. Back, who is the coordinator for the Langdon Center. They are, Kent is the incumbent, and Joel is the new applicant. Now this one will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Council, is there any discussion on these two applicants?
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted maybe to help with, with Kent's position. He's, he's basically the artistic director of the, of the theater company, not really the owner.
Any more discussion on these two applicants, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to select one of these applicants. Do I have a motion to select one of these applicants?
I'll make a motion, nominate Kent White.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen to select Kent White. Do I have any other motions? Uh, entertain, do I have a second on Kent Whites?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons for Kent Whites. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Kent Whites will be the entertainment industry or local attractions. His will be expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. The next applicant is the historic preservation or museum classification. We have two applicants here, Diane Locke, which is the incumbent, and Cindy Peters, which is a new applicant. Cindy Peters is the Secretary of Preserve Granberry, and Diane Locke is a member of the Preserve Granberry. This, this, this seat will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Council, is there any discussion on these two applicants? Looks like they're both from the same group of folks there. If not, I'll entertain a motion to, entertain a motion to select one.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Cindy Peters.
I've got a motion to nominate Cindy Peters by Councilman Couch. Is there any more motions? Do I have a second for Cindy Peters? I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, council? All in favor of Cindy Peters, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Cindy Peters will be the historic preservation or museum representative, expiring June thirtieth, At this time, council, as you know, we need to select a, a Chair, a Chair for this, for the tab board. Now, we could do, actually, they have recommended that we, if we wanted to change this, that we would, we would let the staff be directed to bring, revise the ordinance regarding the Chair appointment, meaning that possibly the Board could select the Chairperson, or we could have the Board select three to four or five people out of the Board, bring them back to us, and then we could select those. But I, I do believe, after doing a little research on this, and I'm, I'm welcome for any discussion on this, but they work with these folks hand-in-hand, and if the Board would, would want to select their Chairperson, I, I, I don't see any problem with that at all. So we have the opportunity here to make that, to make that choice, and then they can go back and, and select their Chairperson. So council, is there any discussion on that matter?
Mayor, that would be my preference, is to let them decide.
Council, is there any more discussion? Then do I have a motion for this item?
I make a motion for the Tourism Advisory Board to select, make a selection on their Chair.
Okay, we, well, we can't do that. What we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to vote to change the ordinance revision, so we'll have to, so do you, if you want to make a motion for that, that's what has to come first.
Okay, so.
Direct the staff, yeah.
Direct the staff.
So I've got a motion from Councilperson Myers to direct the staff to bring back an ordinance revision regarding the Chair appointment, correct?
Is that on the agenda?
Pardon?
It is.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Allen?
No, I, I didn't see it on there.
Okay.
I seen everywhere it says it. I'm sorry, staff recommendation.
Yeah, I've got a motion to direct the staff to bring back an ordinance revision regarding the Chair appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We will go with the staff recommendation.
Now, just keep in mind that you haven't changed the ordinance yet. The only thing you've done is ask the staff to put an item on the agenda to allow you to do that.
Exactly.
So we'll do that next time in two weeks.
Thank you. Our next item is to consider, consider directing the Parks Board, make sure I'm right, consider directing the Parks Board to research and advise city council regarding new facilities or activities that could be implemented to encourage use of Lake Granberry at its low lake levels. This item is placed on the agenda by council members Parsons and Couch. So with that said, I'm gonna call upon, let's pick one at random here, I'm gonna call upon Mr. Couch to give us a little background, or you can refer to Councilperson Parsons.
Um, I'm gonna defer to Mickey first.
I thought you.
Well, thank you for that. This is one item that I brought up at the recent planning session where we're talking about budget items. Life is, is strange in a lot of ways. Since I've been on council, we built a city beach, we built a permanent walkway around that city beach, we built a boardwalk around our conference center, we spent taxpayers' money trying to build a, a set of boat docks, and then we did, built a very nice boat ramp with three ramps and restroom facilities and a great parking lot for boats to be launched, and then shortly thereafter the B.R.A. changed their water management plan, and all of those facilities are basically nonusable at this point in time. I would like to see if we could ask the Parks Board to begin to possibly come up with some ideas about how to revitalize our beach, perhaps we could do something with the boardwalk, take out a portion of it, make a portion of it movable. What could we do to our boat ramp? Could we, I don't know, fill that hole up and extend the boat ramp out to, to the end of the bridges there, or can you dig it out? I don't know what, what are the possibilities there? An idea that might be, based on an article I saw in the paper today, kayaks. What about kayak rentals? Perhaps there's a place at the beach we could do that through the concession stand, or maybe someone, a vendor would come and, and do that at the existing city boat ramp. The B.R.A.'s been closing a lot of its parks, one because they don't have access to the water, but they've been doing a little bit of upgrading. Perhaps we could talk to the B.R.A. about extending the boat ramp at the conference center, and then we may have to be considering, how do we change our operation at the conference center to accommodate the boat trailers that are now parking out there? How do you handle that when you have a conference center that's full of people and fifty percent of the spaces are taken up by boat trailers? But just trying to find out some way, what can we do at the city beach to, is there any way to make that accessible? I took my grandson out there the, the other day to the Splash Park, and it was a lot of fun, and the beach was still open and usable for, for an eighteen-month-old. Perhaps we could figure out some way to attract kiddos to playing there. Maybe that would include possibly more playground equipment there. But just asking the Parks Board to begin to really help us, city council to become attuned, aware, or, or beginning to understand what possibly we might do to change our operation of Lake Granberry at the way, at our new, uh, lake levels.
Thank you, Councilperson Parsons. Councilman Couch, or you got, you want to add to that?
Two things. You know, I think that we need a, maybe a, a re-education of what, what we still have left, that it's, it's not as bad as, as we may seem it to be. There's still forty and fifty feet deep of, deep depth of water out there, and I'm guilty myself of thinking that I can't take my boat out there. And I think as, if we have boaters that are committed to launching down there, I think we can actually change the perception of, of using our, our own lake. So, um, one of the main things I'd like to see is, at the conference center ramp, is how quickly could we have maybe some sort of temporary floating dock so that if you do launch, you know, you can let people on and off of your boat? The other thing I'd like to see us do, that I don't think is that expensive, is if we were to set up volleyball nets on the beach. It's amazing, when you throw up a volleyball net, how many people show up. That would change the perception of, of, of the use of, of the beach. And then direct the Parks Board to help us understand or work with the B.R.A. on the safety issue of, of once you are on the lake, you know, 'cause I'm actually going out tomorrow, but I guess if I had to, had to explain why I haven't launched my boat, it's, I guess it's probably from a safety issue, am I gonna hit something? So could we become better educated about, if I'm in the middle of the channel, can I trust that I'm not, I'm, I'm going to be safe if, if I pull a skier or, or whatever? I don't, I don't have the answer to that yet. And I think that's something that we could, we could get relatively quickly by getting some of the patrol officers from B.R.A. to, to actually take us out there and, and re-educate ourselves on, on how we can use our lake. And I, I think we'd be pretty amazed how, how quickly we could shift this, the thought process and all that. And I think it's a, it's an extreme priority, and I'd really like to see us expedite anything that we do do. That's about it, thanks.
Thank you. There, there is a lot of opportunities out there, but yet there is also some, some dangers out there coming into the summer, and one of those that I've encountered with some folks is that they're trying to clear out some of their beach areas, and they're doing so, but as they're doing so, they're hitting some, some areas where they think it's solid, and it's mud, and it's, and they're sinking. I had a friend that actually got stuck and had to be pulled out himself because he went down so fast. So there are some safety things that we need to watch out for out there, very, very much. So with, with these recommendations, what I'd like to do is to, I would recommend that one or two councilpersons, or even myself, maybe Sherri Campbell, to attend the next Parks Board and bring forward a list of things that we'd like for them to look at. Do we have any Parks Board people out there tonight, today?
Oh, there's one out there.
Kay. Kay. A multiple, there's another multiple in there, Mr. Allen. But, Kay, you know, if we, you know, whenever the next Parks Board meeting is, I'd like to have some representation there, and maybe sit down with the Board and, and talk about some of these issues that we could bring forward, and see if there's some possibilities or some things that we could do to, you know, liven up our lake a little more out there. Thank you. Council, thank you for that. Our next item is to consider an executable memorandum of tower lease agreement and an executable tower lease agreement between the City of Granberry and Dallas MTA LP, D-SLAD-B-A, Version Wireless. And I'm gonna call upon our IT Director, Tony Toll, to give us a little background on this, if you would, please, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor, council, city manager. We were approached by Verizon Wireless back December, January timeframe. They were inquiring as to whether we would be interested in entering a lease agreement to have them attach some new Verizon LTE equipment, because their LTE coverage in Granberry is somewhat limited. City manager had directed me to speak with their broker. I asked the broker to let us speak directly to the Verizon folks. I was trying to cut the middleman out. So our discussions have been directly with Verizon. You have documents in front of you that have been gone over, oh, probably for the last four months, back between their attorneys and the city attorney, and we've reached a agreement on the monthly rentals. This agreement was, or the rental fee was based upon research that I did with members of the Texas Association of of the Texas Association of Government IT Managers, which is basically all the cities around us. And their monthly rental fees were varying between two thousand to twenty-five hundred, so they were looking at about the same amount that we've got here, proposed, twenty thousand a year to twenty-five thousand a year. A lot of that depended upon how many attachments they were actually putting on the tower. The other thing that drove the price was how many was in their customer base in that area. Verizon is the one who first came in with about twenty grand, and I said, "We need to go a little bit higher," and the best I could get out of them was twenty thousand four hundred for the year, based on what I saw from the other cities that looked about right for the size of our town. This does, this does look at enabling the Verizon LTE service here in Granbury considerably for the customers that we have, the citizens that are on Verizon now. In fact, your iPads that the council carries are on Verizon. This is going to help those tremendously with the 4G LTE service that they're putting forth in this. The second issue that we had with them about money was, we had already worked out an agreement through the Parks Department and the Parks Board to build a fence around the new tower and the building that we had there and the diesel generator. So, that price had already been negotiated. So, I approached Verizon again, and I said, "In order for us to do this, you guys are going to have to pony up to pay for the extra fence to encompass your equipment in that same fenced area." And they agreed to up to twelve thousand dollars to go towards the fence, to increase the size of the fence, so it's completely fenced in. I didn't entertain any questions that you may have.
Tony, do we still, with that, adding to that, do we still have room for even additional? I mean...
Yes, sir, that tower actually has three more attachment points. I think if you look in your documents, you'll see, I think they're going at either one hundred and ten or one hundred and twenty-five foot in height. That's a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot tower. We've got, structurally, we've got enough for three more attachments on that tower. And as long as we don't increase the height, we're not going to impact anything from an FAA standpoint. Now, I will tell you that based on Verizon's survey, they went out and actually had a survey done of the site. They came back and found that our coordinates that we had submitted to the FAA for our review back a year ago, this past January, we were eight feet off in one direction and ten feet off in another. And they asked us to revise our FAA submittal because they said they needed it to be dead on. So, we have done that, we're waiting for that approval to come back. Verizon knows that it's not going to hold up, there's not going to be any holdup on that approval. It's just an administrative thing, you have to file the new coordinates with them. So, as long as we do not go up in height with the tower, we've still got room for three more attachments on it.
It's a matter of buying. Counsel, any more questions for Tony?
I've got one, two or three. It's actually a twenty-year contract, right?
Say that again, sir.
This is a twenty-year contract?
Actually, it's a five-year with the automatic extensions unless there is a, either party decides to terminate that lease. There is termination clause in the lease.
Unless terminated by the leasing.
That's correct.
Here's my only problem. You're looking at twenty thousand dollars a year. It's actually twenty-five years, I'm sorry. And last year, it's up to thirty thousand, which I don't think I'll be here in twenty-five years anyway, but, you know, these things are hard to get in the metroplex. They're hard to find. People will let you put them up, and they pay big money for it. Today, we may think it's a fast twenty thousand, but twenty-five years from now, it might be worth a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, or two hundred thousand, who knows? I just think it's too long, I mean, we're going to tie her up, right?
Say that again, sir.
The tire's already up, right?
Tire's already up, yes, sir.
So, I mean, I wouldn't mind a three-year deal, but I can't see a twenty-five-year deal for thirty thousand dollars. I just think it's, that's spending our grandchildren's money because I promise you, in the metroplex, they cannot touch that for what they're paying, the twenty thousand for the first year, Tony.
Well, I will tell you that some of the cities that I did get quotes from are in the metroplex, Keller, Roanoke, some of the other larger cities on the north side of Fort Worth, and these are the same prices that they're getting, and they're all entering into multi-year deals, they're not entering into short-term deals. And I'll be honest with you, I do not know if Verizon will look at a short-term deal because there is so much infrastructure investment that they have to make on the bottom side of the tower to get that array tied into their network. So, they have quite a few, or quite a bit of infrastructure cost besides just mounting it to the tower. So, I'll do whatever you direct me to do, or the attorney can go back and try and negotiate with them. I'm just advising you, based on what I saw from quotes from the metroplex and our surrounding area, this is the going rate, and this is the going type of contract that everyone is entering into now, and I do not believe that Verizon will entertain a shorter-term lease.
I mean, that's just, that's just one vote, one opinion. I just don't like, I don't like committing to taxpayers for twenty-five years down the road for something that we all know is going to be worth a lot more than that.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
I've got a question for the city attorney. Just for my own clarification, so, let's say in the fourth or the ninth year, the market demands a higher fee. Am I understanding that correctly, that we could actually terminate the contract every five years, basically, and renegotiate, or not?
It has a, the termination clause allows for either party to terminate it at the end of the option period, but you've got to wait for the five-year term.
Correct. So, after five years, if you feel like that our market value is higher than what the next four or next year, five-year lease is going to produce, we have, I believe it's a sixty-day notification that we're not going to extend to the next period.
Well, could we maybe book in the calendar some sort of market analysis when we get close to the first five?
That's what I would recommend, that as we approach each of the five-year terms, we need to do a market analysis and find out. I will point out one other thing. We have an exact duplicate of this tower that is out on the east side of town, right next to the water tower, that was constructed nine years ago. And I have never been approached by a cellular company for attachment to that tower. So, while the metroplex is very busy with this type of work, the rural areas such as ours, they're not, they're not very often going to come to a person with an existing tower, they're going to build their own.
Basically, get it while we can, and if we can negotiate it down the road here when it comes up, then they don't want that, and we can wait to get somebody else on there.
That's what I would recommend, yes, sir.
I didn't, I read that spirit, but we could just say, we want to discontinue this after five years for no reason, no cause, no nothing, and it's dropped.
If you give them sixty days' notice.
Yeah, and that's it.
Take a damn right.
Okay. I did not understand it that way. I thought we were locked in for twenty-five years.
Councilman Parsons?
Did anybody have a volume adder or a metric on there where, you know, if they've got seventy-five customers today, and five years from now, they've got one hundred and fifty, would there be a way to put a volume metric in it?
There was basically three ways that the contracts that I looked at from the other cities had been negotiated. One was based on total traffic, number of customers going on the tower, and getting a per-customer charge back to the city. The second one was where the city negotiated free service with the cellular company for all of their employees, okay? And then the third one was what you see here, where we get a monthly fee, flat fee, it's not based on the number of customers. I don't know, I don't know how receptive Verizon would be to the customer approach. And the other thing is, is I don't have any market analysis that tells me how many Verizon customers we actually have that would be serviced off of that tower. You have to remember that they're putting up 4G LTE service, which is a shorter signal, so the signal, the people who would be using this tower are not going to be out into the extensive Hood County or the south side, very far south side of Granbury. If you look at Sprint's layout, they have a tower right at the reunion grounds, and then their next LTE tower is right behind Kentucky Fried Chicken. That's how close they are. And if you look at AT&amp;T, they have one right there at the theater, and then they have one right there behind the bingo hall. So, they have to have them that close because that service has a much shorter range of being able to broadcast and be picked up. So, I don't know if I would recommend approaching a customer count-based lease because I don't know how much we're going to have in that area that would be serviced enough to actually draw the revenue that we're seeing here with this contract.
Is that the, that's the used tower that we brought up there, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Some time ago? That's a pretty good deal in it also. Counsel, is there any more discussion? Any more questions for Tony Toll? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion then to approve the executable memorandum for the tower lease agreement and the executable tower lease agreement between the City of Granbury and Dallas MTA LP DBA Verizon Wireless. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Councilperson Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilperson Couch? Any more discussion, counsel?
Tony, could we see if they would advertise on the TV station, that buy one of those packages? Would you ask them that? All right, thanks.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider a request from Roger Harmon, the Johnson County judge, to endorse his appointment to the Regional Transportation Council of North Central Council of Governments for a two-year term, and consider and adopt a resolution of the city council provided for the said endorsement from the City of Granbury. As you know, we tabled this item last council meeting, and there was some concern about the representation of Hood County with the Judge Harmon being the chair of this committee. And I, it was tabled by Councilperson Parsons, and I did do some research, I actually called his office, at first he was out. I did have an opportunity to talk, I left a message for him, he sent back a message to me, and he assured me and the council and the City of Granbury that it was in his interest to support Granbury and any of their needs, and he asked, and he did say, you know, welcome any audience and people and participation, but he did let us know that we do have a representative, we do have what I'd call a dog in the fight with Darrell, with Judge Cochrane. He is the alternate there. But also, I did some research with the council, and I talked to them how this actually works out, and as we mentioned last week, or the last council meeting, that he has to represent two hundred employees, two hundred citizens. That's made up of Johnson County and Hood County. Now, Johnson County has already endorsed him, that's a hundred and fifty. He already has over fifty percent. Hood County has endorsed him, so there's the other portion of it, but actually, he will carry that with just Johnson County. So, my recommendation, counsel, and I plan on having some more conversation with Judge Harmon, try to get a more vigorous relationship to where, you know, we could have some say and actually take, have some council people to go to some of the meetings representing because of some of the, some of the roads and spurs that we'd like to see coming off of the new highway out there would be real, you know, would be real helpful to us, and I think that was some of the concern when they select, when they asked for this to be rotated. Now, there is a possibility we could put some other people on there when the Judge Cochrane comes off to be the alternate. So, I think we've had some council people attend some of these meetings, the city managers attended them also. But I was aware too that with not endorsing him would just send a bad message saying that we don't endorse him, and with him being the councilperson or the head of that, of the, that region, of our region, probably wouldn't be a good idea. So, with that said, counsel, I'm going to entertain any questions or concerns, and I think some of the other council people have done some research also.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
I would solicit Mr. Harmon's support for what I call the Comanche Peak Trail, which would be the extension of the Chisholm Trail in TTA toll road from Wyss, supposedly somewhere along eleven eighty-seven, just south of Benbrook Lake, continuing down and tying into the proposed Crescent Relief Route. I would also solicit his support for the completion of the Crescent Relief Route. And then I would also solicit his support for thoroughfare plans, some way of working with the NetCog or the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Authority, to come up with funds to help Hood County and the City of Granbury revise our thoroughfare plan. We need to have an update and an upgrade to our thoroughfare and road plans throughout the city and the county. If we can get a letter proposal for him that he supports those three items, then I'm more than willing to endorse him for this position.
Councilperson Parsons, I'll tell you what, I will, I will set the meeting up for me and you to talk to him, and amongst other things. Tonight, we do need to make that decision though, because we're actually, we're actually too far out. The endorsement doesn't mean he's going to get it or not, he's already there. They just need the Granbury endorsement, but he has assured me that he would talk with Granbury on any issues they want, or we could send a representative. So, if you would like for me to set up the meeting with Judge Harmon, and we could, we could go over them items, or we could take and go over those with Judge Cochrane, and however you wish to do it, we could surely do it. And it sounds like he's wanting to work with us, I think he's, I think he's had some people talk to him, not only Granbury, but some other folks with some statements that he had made, why he felt like he should be appointed as the person representing. And, you know, with the district as big as it is, and the county judge is carrying that many people, maybe he should, but my only concern was that he, that makes sure that he listens to the little guys, too. And there's other people that are even littler than us that he's representing. So, I would, I would surely like to set that up with him, Mr. Parsons, and me and you both be welcome to go there, or have him come here and sit down with some of those issues that you pointed out, because those are issues that I had on, and had, some other people had talked about also, so those are great issues.
Well, I have discussed those issues with Judge Cochrane.
Yeah.
And I'm more than willing to meet with Mr. Harmon and discuss those issues with him, and discuss a lot of other transportation issues with him.
I will set that up.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Councilman Allen.
If we hadn't, if we'd only voted for him, let's say if the county hadn't voted for him, would he have had enough?
Yes. It's like an electoral vote, it's like the election here in the City of Granbury, all he has to carry is fifty-one of the two hundred, and they're a hundred and fifty.
So, they got him.
We're fifty-seven, so that's how he comes up to the two hundred working numbers.
Then I just wondered then if we voted against him, and I know Roger. I just wonder if we...
A lot of people do know him.
I wonder if we voted, I wonder if we voted against him, or just no vote with him. He might open his eyes up and says, "You know what? Maybe I need to work with those guys."
I think that's happened, I think that's happened already, I think that's happened already, and so now he's, that's why he's willing to more, to go, to reach out and to talk to people because of some of the statements that he made. And yes, he is appointed by the judges, by the judges as that representative, but he represents a lot of other littler counties, littler cities, and the cities are the ones that are concerned, you know, the counties are the big ones. But I've already had some discussion with Judge Cochrane, and we think as a team, as the city and the county, that we can, we can approach Judge Harmon with some issues that we got and make them bigger than what he thinks they are.
What, did you talk to him this week or last week?
This week, he was out of town, he was out of town last week. This week, I missed him, and he's secretary... This week, I missed him, and he's secretary, called me back and said that he was, he was wanting to sit down with me. But I did talk to the transportation people, the...
So, Mr. Mayor, in, in the interest of establishing a working, friendly relationship with Mr. Harmon and the county judges, and in the interest of forwarding regional transportation in Granbury and our area, and, and in the interest of ensuring that our voice is heard at the table, I'm going to suggest that we adopt a resolution providing for endorsement of Roger Harmon as our representative at the RTC.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Councilman Parsons. We have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That resolution is adopted. Our next item is to discuss and consider a possible amendment to the drought contingency plan to allow for irrigation at sites of new commercial and residential construction. This item is placed on the agenda by Councilmember Tony Allen. Councilman, Councilman Allen, I'm going to let you talk about this a little bit, then we'll probably call Alva Cox, he's done a little research on it. As you know, we talked about, we had this as a discussion item at the last council meeting, and one of the things that I encouraged was if we wanted to make some changes or make some, to make some exceptions, that we, we, we come back to the council, or we come back with some really good, solid plan of why we'd want to make an exception, because as you know, this drought contingency plan is getting, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. So, we, we have a possibility going into Phase Three. We may not be in Phase Two very long, and then there'd be a whole new ballgame that we'd be looking at. And if you've been watching the, the news, the papers, everywhere around the Metroplex, they're all in the same situation. So, Councilman Allen, if you came up with some, some plan for this contingency plan revision, let us know.
Thank you, sir. I, first of all, I will say it to the public out here, Stuart, you correct me if I'm wrong. I do have two homes that I'm building myself in Catalina Bay. I'm partners with my son. Also, my daughter-in-law is a builder in Abe's Landing and all over. So, if there is a conflict of interest here, I'm more than happy to step right over there and talk, and don't need to vote. So, I don't want nobody to come back three months from now and say, Tony argued for yourself or for his daughter-in-law, which she didn't even know about it. She's in Michigan, but that's the way rumors get here in this town. But Stuart, you tell me what I need to do.
Councilmember, we discussed this, and like I explained to you on the phone, I do not believe that there is a Chapter 171 conflict, not here.
Okay.
And I, and I'll just say for the record, I based my decision on the fact that any action you take affects the city as a whole, not just you personally, and it doesn't affect anybody any differently. Any, do not affect you any differently than anybody else in the whole city.
All right. What it is, last, and I'm going to ask some questions to the mayor, and I'm going to ask some questions to Alva. But I believe last meeting, saving my voice for all this, now I'm going to lose it, but the last meeting we had, either Mayor, you said, or Alva said, we could water two days a week in order, and water 10 hours, and then stop and water 10 hours. Do you remember that conversation?
Well, yeah, it's posted, Councilman Allen.
Okay, how, how does that work? I'm not familiar.
Okay, I'm going to use, I'm going to use mine. Even in odds, it starts at midnight, midnight to 10 o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's 10 hours.
Mm-hmm.
But you can turn it right around in that same day and start at, and start at 8 o'clock in the morning. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 8 o'clock at night, and go to midnight.
So, that's four hours.
That's four more hours. That's 14 hours in one day, actually.
Yeah.
But they're, they're, they butt up to each other, so the way I do mine, and I consider mine being, if I was to do it that day, that gives me actually some watering in the day before and the day after.
Okay. Reason I'm asking those questions, I, I had it wrong there, and that's my fault, I apologize. I know most of us out here have sprinkler systems, so if I'm talking about a six-zone station or a seven-zone station, I'm sure everybody here's got a sprinkler. You know what I'm talking about? Is that correct or not on the council?
Well, I don't anymore, but go ahead.
I don't have one anymore either.
Go ahead, Councilman Allen.
You don't need to get on the city water. Okay. If you take an average yard in, in most of these subdivisions, you've got one zone for the front flower bed, it's spray heads or drip, but let's say spray because it takes more water. You usually have two rotor heads, two zones of rotors in the front yard, or like in Waters Edge, we had pop-up heads there, but let's just say two rotors, it's more water for them. You got on the left side of the house, usually you have some pop-up spray heads. Right side, you have pop-up spray heads. In the backyard, let's say you have two more zones of rotors. If you sprayed, this is spraying them every day, every day, seven days a week, if you sprayed your flower bed 10 minutes, your rotor zones for 30, each one, that's 60 for the front yard, and then the two side yards, you've got 10 and 10, and in the backyard, you go 30 and 30, which gives you a total of 150 minutes per day of watering. Your average is going to be 10 gallons or less. It depends on the nozzles, if it's a quarter, full, three-quarters, whatever, the spray. If it's a four-foot spray, eight-foot spray, or 15-foot, determines the gallons. But overall, on average, and I've been doing irrigation for 20 years, your average is going to be approximately 10 gallons per minute. If you did that times 10 gallons, that's 1,500 gallons. If you did it seven days a week, it's 10,500 gallons. Times four weeks, it's 42,000 gallons of water. If you do the two times a week watering, and I'm just using 10 hours, not 14, if you did it per day, you'd be talking about 600 minutes at 10 gallons a minute, is 6,000 gallons per day. Times two for two days is 12,000 gallons, and then for the four, four weeks, you'd be using 48,000 gallons of water. Now, you'd be using more water, more than 14 hours a day, and you would be, if it's on a timer and set up right. And I'm willing to answer any question on that. I'm pretty sure I'm right. The other thing is, is talk about watering them by hose. Well, you can't get anybody to work less than $10 an hour that, that wants to work. Most of them don't want to work for 10, they want 12, 15. And you go out here and start watering it, or you lay it down, it's going to run down the road, you're going to waste more water. I'm not for sure that, I was asking for 60 days. The guy out at 144 still says that we need 60 days, especially August. July is going to be rough. So far, it hasn't, it doesn't look like it's going to be that bad, but it might. But we got like a two-month period here, say September, three months, just to be fair. After that, it starts cooling down, and hopefully we get rain. Hopefully, we don't, they quit selling our water down BRA and let us have a little bit here to use for ourselves, and this will be over with. But I'm telling you, with our tax revenue going down on our, on our homes, and now we're going to put builders out of business here in town, and sure, we can not put them down, not put the grass down, but then what you wind up doing is you're putting money in escrow. Then you have weeds growing out there like we got all up down Highway right now. And then you come back and you blade that off. That costs money, folks. A lot of money. So, there is a way to get this done. We can get over TCQ, and, and they said we could present a deal to them, and they would rule on it. And I believe that's what Alva told us last time we were here. We can make that decision tonight without their approval. It's up to us.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Is there any more discussion before I call Alva Cox up? Alva? I know you've done some homework also.
I have, yes, sir. I will, there we go. What I've done is I looked at a lot of them, as far as different, as far as all the way from the drought contingencies, all the way in, in, you know, our area, plus I looked at the DFW. If you looked on the news, there's three cities right now that actually did do what Mr. Allen was saying, was as far as they did 30 days. But this, they allowed 30 days for irrigation. However, that is all fixing to go bye-bye come Friday. They're fixing to only allow watering one time every two weeks. They are currently at 83 percent of their capacity. So, they've kind of, you know, let them go, and now basically, and what the TCQ pretty much says, and I'll go through the presentation here in a minute, but basically what it says, it's a non-essential. And understand what Mr. Allen's saying. Obviously, you know, builders want to put the grass down, you know, I think we all understand that side. But on the other side of it, we have to protect our resources, and that's, and that's kind of what this is. So, I'll kind of go through it a little bit. Number one, what we talked about is, well, actually, Mr. Allen, we all know this, I don't think anybody here doubts this, we're currently at 26 inches of rainfall right now. Obviously, our average is 34.91. So, and again, this is, I don't think any news to anybody here. Okay, this is the US drought monitor. I believe Councilman Parsons talked about this in the last meeting. I brought this up, this is actually June 10th that I brought this up. If you look on there, you notice we're in extreme drought in Hood County. Actually, most of North Texas is. And we're not getting any better. Actually, I looked about a month ago, two months ago, we were actually in the, I believe the D2, and now we've moved into D3. Looks like we may even move into the D4, which is extremely bad, which obviously is bad as it is now. Again, this is, this is another showing basically how the drought's going to intensify or what they think. And again, you know, we know how weather may not affect, I think pretty much they say pretty much everything. But as you can see, this is a predictions. And if you notice the color that, that's up there and that you see, actually, we're right in the middle of this drought, and it looks like it's going to intensify for us. It's not going to get any better. And obviously, water supplies are very, very, I mean, it's dear right now. This right here basically goes into just a little bit, it, it actually goes into far as the population demands in different areas, as far as in showing what the shortages are fixing to be. This is 2030, which, you know, seems like a long time from now. But if you notice, you don't see any of them up there, any of the major cities, major areas, that actually had surplus of water, not one. And we're in there. Right now, the lake is roughly about 52 percent full, as of today, actually. I believe it's down to like 58.1 percent of what I was looking at. So, it's dropping, no, again, you know, for whatever reasons, it's, it's still dropping. So, as far as that goes. What we normally use, or what we used last year was 49 million gallons per the month. As you're going to see, and we'll explain the one, I think that's back when we went into the drought contingency, but as you can see, back in July of 2011, we actually 80 million gallons. I mean, that's the most that we've seen. But as you see, too, it's still creeping up, if you notice. And not too bad, like I said, in 2013, you know, we were proactive, we were trying to, you know, get the message out, not to water the grass, not to, you know, use unnecessary water, washing cars and driveways and things like that. And we're still doing that. But as you see, it's still creeped up, some of it, and you'll see why. If you see, if you start noticing, this is what's scary. This is the scariest part right here. We used to have, 2007, we had 4,100 connections, okay? And with that, we had a capacity of 3.9 million gallons, so which equated out to about 965 gallons, okay, per day, per connection. Now then, let's move into 2014. We've got 5,100 connections, we have 3.9 million gallons a day. As you notice, we only have 754 gallons per day. So, again, if we use too much irrigation, which actually during the summer month, the council almost 70 percent of water is...
Can I ask you a question on that, Alva?
Yes, sir.
Because I didn't, I didn't get these, we didn't get these until tonight.
Yes.
So, it's not really fair for me to sit here and make a judgment on something I hadn't read.
Yes.
It'd been, but you're saying we only have 754 gallons per day of extra water?
Uh, per connection.
Per connection, thank you.
Per connection, yes.
Thank you, you left it out.
Yes, sir. So, and, and I'll just give you, it's not on here, but I'll just tell you.
Lot of water.
Yes, it is, it is. But the average person, not irrigation, is 100 gallons per person per day. So, that one connection, average for no irrigation whatsoever, would be 300 gallons a day. Okay, that's still half of that.
But that's based on what you've got now.
Yes, sir, it is, yes.
And they got irrigation already.
Yes, sir, yes, it is. All right. This is what keeps us in water right there. You've heard us talk about it before. This is our floating pump out there. It's kind of engineered, a little different, obviously, but, but it worked. And this is what I talked about. Now, do you see these pipes coming up, and they're completely out of the ground? You can't see in the picture, but our intake structure is actually about six foot out of the water. And that's why obviously we had to build the floating pumps. If we wouldn't went with the floating pumps, we wouldn't have water. Actually, we'd lose about another 500, 600,000 gallons a day. I mean, that would be catastrophic. And, and that's what I, you know, and I think I was saying at the last meeting, I said, you know, if we lose a major pump, we go have a big fire, big main break, we're out of water. I mean, we won't have enough water.
What's BRA saying about that?
As far as about...
About if that's run out of water?
Um...
You're on the committee.
Well, I'm on the, I'm actually on the Brazos. But basically, I mean, as far as, that channel right there is the deepest channel, thank God, of where we're at right now. But, I mean, if anything happens to that pump, I think I believe, and I still have about 15 foot, 16 foot of water underneath us. Now, here's, I guess, the good news, bad news? The good news is, I believe, is it can only go down to 675, the lake level. Now, I mean, I don't know if that's good news, bad news, but, so that's only six feet, so it still gives me roughly about eight feet. Now, water quality starts, you know, when you get down in there, water quality will suffer, but, you know, that's, we treat it, we do what we have to do, as far as that goes, to make sure it's still obviously good, affordable quality. But that, that's kind of what I've been talking about, you know, far as, you know, stuff like this. And, and obviously, we had to get creative on this, but it works, you know, and that's the key.
Alva, help me, I guess quantify the lake level and the amount of water we are using. It sounds to me like a pump issue versus running out of water from the lake? I'm not...
No, currently, no. I mean, as far as, I mean, we have...
Just explain this picture, how it relates to what we're talking about.
Well, as you see before, our intake structure is about eight feet out of water, okay? That, that's our traditional, that's how it was designed, engineered, put in there. And basically, again, we had to get creative to put this pump down in there.
I understand that.
But as you see, you know, you have pipe running over, I mean, it could be, I guess, my point being is, is like this right here, if anything happens, I mean, it's wide open. If something happened to it, we lose 500,000 gallons a day instantly right there.
That would happen if we had sprinklers going 24 hours a day or not going, Alva.
Well, and it gets...
It has no bearing upon what we're asking for.
Yes, I do agree with that.
None whatsoever.
I, I do agree with that, but I'm just...
Beautiful picture, though.
We always talk about this, so I wanted to make sure that y'all did see that. This is some, again, it's kind of, pretty much everybody already knows, apparently, and it shows the lake level all the way through, it shows percentages, this is actually June 4th, you know, as far as each one. I have no clue idea if anybody's going to ask me why Livingston and Ingranger have 100%. I have no clue idea, as far as that goes, but I did, obviously, that caught my eye. This is what they're predicting for July 31st, and again, it's a prediction, so you can take it for what it's worth, but they're saying basically we're going to be 14 feet low. And as you can see, 42 percent. So, again, like I said, things are severe right now. And again, like I said, if you look at the other cities in the, in the area, nobody is lessening the restrictions on the water right now. They're actually getting stricter, they're actually taking away, you know, what we have. Okay. Now, one thing that we did is, back in 2002 was when we originally adopted this. Now, we've modified it every, every five years, gone forward. But again, what we've done is, obviously, in the city council, we set up an aggressive water conservation plan, that's what we did. But what we're doing is, obviously, we're protecting the integrity of the water supplies and prolonging, prolonging the life of the existing water sources. Okay, as you've seen, we haven't picked up water, we're 3.9 million, okay? We have not increased. And again, this is kind of, we're just going through. You've got stage one, which is voluntary, stage two, which is mandatory, stage three, which is emergency situation. Kind of going back to what we're talking about. Basically, stage one, again, is voluntary. You can have non-essential purposes, filling up brand-new pools, whatever the case may be, but again, it's voluntary. Okay? Stage two? Stage two, you have two-point-five million gallons for five consecutive days, which we got that, okay? Or if you hit three-point-one million. So kind of give you some of the triggers we were talking about, so you can kind of see. Okay? Again, and this is kind of repeating kind of what the mayor said, as far as about the hours and so forth, when you, when you could water. And then what you can do, what you can't do with stage two. Stage three, again, we have to...
We flip back to that one just a minute.
Good.
All right. And then stage three, basically, again, we've talked about this too, as far as how serious it has to be. Again, we're getting close, we're increasing up on this. If you do, like I said, if we start increasing again, and which we will, as far as with irrigation, it's just proven to through the past, it does it every year, everybody starts picking it up. Hopefully, again, with all the things that we've been doing, hopefully, we can keep that down. And again, that's why, like I said, you know, we really need to stick with our plan and go on with it. Again, as you see, when you hit stage three, there's no new landscapes that may be established at that point in time. Most, key word here, most of the drought contingency plans, it's in there. Again, like I talked about, City of Allen, City of McKinney, City of Frisco, have all gone into, again, they're watering one time every two weeks right now. And a lot of them, basically, the North Texas, or North Central Texas Municipal Utility District is actually mandating it to every one of their customers, that they only water one time every two weeks. All right, here's TCQ. Basically, what they're saying is, non-essential water use, water uses that are not essential nor required for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. Okay? As you can see, the first one that they hit is irrigation. It goes into others, use of watering or washing motor vehicles and so forth, so forth. But these are non-essential purposes, these are not essential for life. Obviously, drinking water, cooking, that's essential. Fire fighting, that's essential.
What state is that on, Alva?
This is on all. This is actually, this comes straight from the TCQ.
We don't need to be doing it now.
No, this is definitions right now.
This is definitions out of TCQ.
Sir?
This is definitions out of the TCQ, the two-eighty, this is what, or two-eighty-eight.
Okay, we're not under that rule.
We are under that.
Yes.
I've seen somebody washing the sidewalk today.
Yeah, we are under that. And actually, again, any water runs down, they can receive a citation. So if you see it...
Turn it in.
Call it, call it in. But as you see, okay, here's some of the things that we've done, obviously, and again, I think, I'm pretty sure everybody knows this, basically, what we've done, we've put messages in the water bills, we've put it out on our website, we've put brochures, flyers, door hangers on doors, basically, letters, I mean, we've pretty much done everything you can possibly imagine. We've put it out in the newspaper, trying to let people know what's going on. And that's, that's it, pretty much on that. But again, like I said, what I, you know, my recommendation would be, is like I said, and, you know, not trying to pick on builders, we're not trying to put anybody out of business or anything like that, but basically, we're trying to conserve water, and that's what this is. And we're trying to be fair, as fair as we can. And the thing is, is we allow, and one thing that you have to understand, you do open up Pandora's box, if we allow any exemptions, any of the other places outside city limits that are doing the same thing, they can do the same thing, they can water at will, they have exemptions to.
Yep, they're on our water system.
Yes, sir, yeah. And, for example, Bentwater, Mallard Point, Western Hills, any of those, they can do the exact same thing. And I can tell you right now...
Bentwater is on the city, on the Grandberry Water?
Bentwater is, yes. And Mallard Point.
Is on city?
We sell Aqua-Tex.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not ours, but we sell...
How many tickets have y'all issued on this thing since y'all put it in effect?
Um...
Where's that one?
Okay.
How many tickets?
Citations.
Have y'all issued on illegal watering?
Warnings or regular tickets?
Beg pardon?
Warnings or tickets?
Warnings or regular tickets?
No, regular tickets.
Zero. The biggest warning, usually what's in the first minute, major warning, second to forty minutes, citation, third one, third nine days, violation.
What's, what's the first citation? How much is it?
It's, it's just a warning.
The warning is zero.
Oh, I'm saying, the next one.
The second one also another warning.
No dollar.
So you can go, if we start watering right now, we can probably go through July?
You get three a day, though.
Oh, you can?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
We'll get as many as you want.
You're going to be sitting there watching me. Thank you, Allen.
So, so yeah, so far as, currently, like I said, I don't know of any fines that, that has been, I know, matter of fact, I got a call today, I got, got a ticket this morning her, as far as a warning citation, and, you know...
Alva, I, I just say that, that, looking at it from irrigation, if we're talking about irrigation to irrigation, as ten hours a day or fourteen hours a day, or, or seven days a week, with a schedule, you can make a bill or do, what's the difference?
Well, most people aren't going to, I mean, I'm just going to tell you, most people don't water the full, you know, as, as the mayor pointed out, I mean, yes, you have that timeframe, most of them do not, but the point being is, is for new grass and things like that, you know, you would want to soak it well. I'm not saying for fourteen hours, but I'm saying, they have the ability, it's not like we're stopping them from watering, but basically, they have to adhere to the rules just like everybody else in the city.
What's the difference, though, in the usage of water?
Um, well, I mean, again, as you said, normally, you're looking about ten, fifteen gallons per minute, which I agree with what you said. As far as on irrigation, well, it just depends. Normally, an established lawn, they don't use that much. They use quite a bit, I'm not saying, and again, if you went back to that gallons per connection, I can promise you, they're going to go way over that. You know, they're going to have, you know, a thousand gallons, two thousand gallons, easy, they could do, per day, which is, you know, advised against that, but I'm saying, but an established lawn, they're not going to use that much. They'll have their two hours or whatever the case they're doing, depending on what kind of grass they have, as you know, your, you know, irrigation. So, you know, you know a little bit more about that, but as far as if they're doing St. Augustine, they're doing Bermuda, you know, whatever, Fescue, but the bottom line is, they're not going to be doing that much compared to new lawns. New lawns, and here's the other thing is...
Okay, here's my question, Alva, you missed it. On new lawns, new lawns, regardless of if it's hay out there, or if it's Bermuda or St. Augustine, what's the difference if you water it for fourteen hours with a sprinkler system, two times a week, versus watering on this system here? And they'll live, by the way, with this?
The biggest thing is, number one is enforcement, is number one. Number two, the water usage, obviously, depending on what they do, but the number one's enforcement, trying to enforce, at least we know these hours are from midnight to ten, that you're supposed to be watering, okay? Again, these guys aren't going to know, you know, when the officers are out and, you know, I can speak for them.
You don't think they can look at a new home and say, oh, it's a new home?
Um, yeah, but what if they don't have a permit?
At least water it in that.
I mean, there, there's a lot more to it. I mean, you have to have, I mean, we'd have to, you know, again, there's, I think...
You'd have to go to work.
No, I, I think they would, I mean, I think they do quite a bit now, but, but the bottom line is, it just makes it a lot harder to do this. And again, it's not fair to everybody else that asked to adhere to this rule. And I guess that's where I keep going back to, is trying to keep it fair across the board. And the other thing is this, is, that means, and we had this with HEB, there's a prime example, you know, with the rice patties out there, I mean, it was, I mean, they were just going to town on that new grass, which we finally got them to back off from it, and as you've seen, it took. But the bottom line is, you've got Ross, you've got Marshals, you've got Kroger, that's all going to be coming in here, and they're all going to, obviously, they're new, and they're going to want a landscape, and they're going to be wanting to water and do all their stuff. How much water do you think that is? I mean, it's a tremendous...
How do you solve the problem?
Um, well, basically, by, I mean, again, this is my opinion, is sticking to what we have in our plan and, and sticking by it. And again, as far as making sure we stick to the times and make sure we don't go into stage three, we don't go into stage four...
Is anything going to live, Alva?
Well, I, I mean, I do understand, I do understand that. And I had to, when I did mine, and you're correct, when I did my house, I actually had to, I, I did wait until October to do it. It did do well, but like you said, it's a pain. I actually did it with a hose, I wouldn't recommend it, but, but it's still, because you're out there every night with this thing.
Goodbye, Frank.
Um, well, I could add, but...
Alva, have the builders said what, what makes that work for them, as far as, is it three days? Does that, does that, are they requesting a specific...
No, but, but I think, basically, with new grass, and, and what, again, what Councilman Allen's pointing out is, is with new grass, you're trying to get it rooted, and basically, at the very beginning, and, and, you know, Aaron could probably speak a little bit better on the rooting side of it, but basically, you're trying to get rooted into the ground, obviously, to get it to where it's going to stay, where it's not going to burn up instantly. Because again, if you don't put any water on the grass, it's going to just burn up. And it's basically what, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Allen, but I, I believe basically what they're saying is, they're wanting to water to get it deep-rooted, you know, where it can, I guess, last a little bit better, be a little more heat resistant with the deeper roots, I believe, is kind of where they're heading. You know, as far as, again, I've talked to all sorts of different cities, I have talked to a couple of horticulturists, just kind of seeing where and what. I do know the way they had it set up in some of the other cities, the grass is going to die anyways, as far as, you know, with the thirty days and, and so forth. But, again, they had a real hard time trying to place it, that was a hard time, you know, trying to, and then just animosity with the neighbors around, I mean, it was, they said it was pretty bad, on far as that goes. So that's kind of where they're heading, they're trying to get the grass rooted, is what they, what they want. You know, I've seen some cities, and I don't know how we could do that either, but it was like, they water for eight minutes every hour, you know, I...
Well, you know, I think this is about curb appeal. Is there, is, is it, is it possible that we could ask them or give them an option to trade that they wouldn't sod anything in the back, and, and they could do front yards only, in order to get the amount of water they needed? And they could not, if they wanted to do front yards and they opt out of the backyard altogether, that would offset the water usage as a whole? Is that a possibility?
Um...
That would be fair?
I mean, it would probably cut down some, as, again, as you talked about with the different zones, if you have two zones running, you're only going to have X. I don't know...
Was that something we could maybe get back, or you could, you could take some time to look at that as an option, maybe?
Um, I could, I don't know. I mean, yeah, I would have to try to see what benefits that have, but probably, again, I just kind, I guess I keep going back to the, to the plan more so than anything, but I mean, I'm not saying there's not something out there one way or the other, trying to figure it out, but the bottom line is, is, you know, we got to conserve water, whatever we do. And, you know, and again, not trying to single anybody out, but that's, that's the basic line, and, and basically, that's the whole state right now.
How are y'all going to handle it, Alva, whenever Krogers comes in and builds a new building, and, or Mike Brown Ford, if he get, if he builds it, or anybody else? How you going to say, you got to plant thirty thousand dollars worth of stuff for a hundred thousand, you can't water? How do you get by with that?
Well, that's, I mean, again, this is my opinion, I mean, my opinion would be, basically, we do like City of Round Rock and several hundred cities have done to date, is basically, they're saying at this point in time, they, basically, there are no landscaping at this point in time, they're actually...
Yeah.
It's moratorium.
Yeah, the actual plan says there'll be no new landscaping established.
Correct.
Okay, so...
Is it in effect right now, Wayne?
No, under phase three.
Yeah, phase three, yes, sir.
Phase three, but we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
So what I'm saying is, what we do today...
I think we may have to say, go ahead and do it in stage two, I mean, we have to change our plans, like, just don't do it, okay? We're not going to do this.
Yeah.
Because we don't want it to die.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that, that's exactly, I think we, we do, you know, say, hey, let's, you know, let's do follow suit with some of the other cities and show how serious we are, because it is, I agree with, I, I think everybody here agrees, you know, if we tell somebody to plant two-hundred trees, but yet you can't water it, that, that, that's a weird, you know, signal that we're sending, so that would probably be something that we could look at doing. And I think that would be something that would help, help everybody, including the Krogers and everybody, you know, basically, until we're out of the drought, I, I would think that would be the best way or best solution.
I've got a motion, Mayor, when you're ready.
Well...
I've got a couple of questions here.
Got a couple of questions from Councilman Parsons.
So during, during stage two, do we not issue pool, uh, pool permits? Is that the way we control that?
Um, that's how you would control it, is you make sure that, obviously, you know, you can, you can refill them, as far as, again, as long as it's on the hours that we talked about, just like your irrigation side, but then like in stage three, that, you can't fill up a pool, period.
Can't fill up a pool, all right.
Yes, sir.
What, about fifty-one hundred connections, what kind of lake conversions do you think you're going to have, two to three hundred, three or four hundred?
Or going over to irrigation?
Of those paths that are going to come on city versus been on the lake? Have harbor lakes and waters edge and...
Oh, you mean, water, watering, where they used to be watering off the lake, now they're watering up there?
Probably pretty close to that, maybe a little bit more.
Maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty, two hundred?
I'd say give or take, probably, right in that range.
Big...
And we've seen a little bit of the impact, like I said, I, I can't tell what it's from yet, but yes.
And why is, is drip irrigation not a possibility, or what, what is the efficacy of that, or...
Yes, that is, that would be a good option, drip irrigation. Yes, yes, yes.
And I would think when you're first putting it down, is that not a way to get the water underneath the grass?
If you ever aerate anything, they kill it, they don't let it leave. You aerate your yard, you don't want to do it in grass, they've done it in Virginia, it works.
It's rugged for like trees, stuff like that, and I wish, yeah, we could have some kind of technology where, you know, the drip could go in, as Councilman Allen was saying, as far as on the grass, and I don't know if there's anything new out there or not, is there any personal matter?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Right. Right.
Well, I'd like to see you look into, you know, if we offset the backyards, and then also maybe put a limit on the square footage of sod you could lay, if, and, and loosen up the, the water restrictions, if, if they would agree to do that? And that'd be part of the permit? And that way, you'd have the curb appeal as you drive down the street? Is that something we, you could take a, take a look at?
Um, I, I think, again, I, I think the overall point is, is obviously not to, you know, put down new grass and so forth, I think, because we're going to get there, I'm just telling you, it's not, you know, it's a matter of when we get there. And then, once we go into three, kind of, anything that we're doing right now is pretty much meaningless. And then, the other hurdle we do have, and, you know, and that, I can't tell you exactly what they'll do, I got a pretty good idea, but this does have to go to TCU, it does have to be approved, any amendments has to go there. Whether they do, whether they don't, I've seen a couple where they actually had it in three, which, that kind of surprised me a little bit, but as you've seen, the cities came in and corrected that, and took it out. But, far as, I mean, again, I really think we got to stay, you know, stick to our guns, and say, hey, you know, this is the way we've got to go, we've got to continue on this path and conserve this water, so we have water. And making sure, because, again, the infrastructure cost, as we all know, are astronomical, trying to keep increasing demand, or capacities. And so, I think, bottom line, again, I still go back to, you know, we need to, you know, do some kind of moratorium on landscaping, I think, again, is, I think, the best thing to do. And I think the fairest thing to do, and then I know the Krogers and the Rosses and Marshals and all them, they're going to be real happy, you know, to be able to put it off.
You think they're going to be happy?
Yes.
Come on, Alva, why would it be happy?
Um, because right now, they know what's going to happen, if you looked at Lowe's back a couple of years, or whenever that was, all their trees died. So, they've talked to me, and basically said, hey, you know, if we can put off, we can put it off, and we're not, they're not worried about-
We're going to create a next year, and they're already talking about putting it off?
Until the drought's over, yes, sir. I mean, if we can, I mean, I mean, right now, they're-
I don't believe that, Alva, I mean, not saying you're lying, but I just don't believe that a big business like Ross or Marshall would say, I don't want to put my landscape in, and then let whoever develop it, best to whoever hold that money back.
What they don't want to do is, they don't want to have it all die, because then they have to replace it by ordinance.
Who, never mind.
Councilman Allen, if I could, if I could interject, first of all, I think that any big business, and even Kroger, or anybody that comes in here, and I would recommend to them, because this is not going away. This is Texas, this is a drought, this is a drought that we're going to see, and we're going to be in Phase Three, I do believe we will, and we're trying to keep away from Phase Three. Phase Three, we shut down laundry mats, we shut down car washes, we shut down a lot of watering, and, and when you recommend to somebody that's from Texas, or Kroger store, or anybody else like that, that, hey, we will, we will support drought-resistant landscaping, which is some pretty stuff, I've been driving around Ramberg, and some of the people have done their yards now, and they like them, because they've got some color to them, but they're drought-resistant, they know that we're in this plan, they know the situation we're in. There's some folks that, that hasn't soaked in yet, but it will, because it's going to get worse. We're not going to get better, we won't get better if we put, if we put, if we go ahead and let other people do what they've done always before. And when I reached out and Googled a lot of this, and Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is no grass out there that can't germinate, can't establish within 10 to seven, 7 to 10 days. Once it does, then you just start wa, you only allow, you only need an inch of watering on that grass for one week. Now, there's people out here, just right now, and I'm one of them, that has not watered my backyard this year, and I'm mowing it every week, it's still green, because I haven't put no water on it, and it's just the water that I've had, and I've got a measure, I've got a water gauge back there, and I very seldom got over an inch of rain in any given time. So, I know that it's surviving on the rain, the water that I've got right now, so I know it would survive if I was sprinkling it, too. These, the builders, I recommend that they, that they, that they try the drought-resistant landscaping, or that at least ask the people if that, if this is something that they need to look for. And if they're not from Texas, they need to know that this is what's going to be in the future, it's going to be the future of Texas, to do as much of that as we can to preserve this water. We're not trying to tell somebody they can't build a house and sell a house because they can't landscape their yard, we're telling them that Texas is in a drought, and that we have to preserve our water for the, not, not use it for the non-essential, but to have it there for the hospitals and the fires to put out, and all that stuff, and we don't have it right now, and I think it's going to get, I think we're going to be in Phase Three, just from what I've seen, and from what I'm hearing around the Metroplex, and those folks aren't worried about, they're not trying to figure out how they can put exemptions on it, they're trying to figure out how they can get out of Phase Three, how they could conserve so much water, where they can get back to Phase Two, where they can run their laundry mats and stuff. So, it's important, I just, I think people need to understand that, and I think we do, but I think some of the builders and some of the grass folks, you know, the best way to lay sod is right out of the field, you go get it from the field and you lay it. If somebody's storing it, shame on them, because that, that causes the customer to have to water it a lot more. I did that stuff, and I mean, and right now is when they need to take it out of the field, and it's going to get to where they won't even get it in the field, because they can't water it out there, they can't get enough water out of the wells and stuff. So, we're in trouble, and the contingency plan that Alva has put together, done a lot of work on it, we've had a lot of concern, I know the council's been out there working and looking at yards and talking to people, and Alva has done a lot of work with it, to take up and to accommodate the TCUQ, and to keep us out of that phase. And that's what we're ultimately trying to do, is stay out of Phase Three, so-
So, you're saying seven days, it germinates, and that's all the water it needs?
If it's different than that, show me, I've Googled it, and Googled it, and I have not, Aaron, help me out here, is that, you're the expert, you got a degree in this, right? There you go.
What exactly was your statement again, Mayor?
Well, every time I look at the Texas grass, they recommend seven to 10 days of really good watering, I mean, the soakers, and after that, that gra, that's if, if everything fits right, if you take that grass right from the field, and you put it right on the yard, which is the best way to do it, you should do it that way, because you don't, you don't shock it and all that good stuff. But, once you do that, if you get a good soaking, I mean, and you can't overwater it then, you can, you can water the heck out of it, but once you do that, that grass is established, and then you start watering as an established grass, and it also said that you want the grass to almost get to where it mil, where it's, looks like it's about ready to die, because that establishes a stronger root base, because then it survives winter, and it survives drought. If you continue to put water on it, it doesn't ever survive a drought.
That solves the problem.
Am I wrong?
It is true that you want less frequent watering, efficient watering, will establish deeper roots.
Right.
Kind of the standard that I've always read and gone by, you want, if you put an inch of water, of course, there's lots of factors out there, y'all have to realize, clay, sand, wind, temperature, if you put an inch of water on a lawn, ideally, that should moisten four to six inches of soil. And in three days' time, three to four days' time, that much moisture can be evaporated out of the soil. So, in theory, if you, if every three days, if you were watering, put, applying that much water to the lawn, it would survive. But, here again, getting that established is the kicker. And I'm guilty, I'm sure all landscapers are guilty, the old Dr. Pepper method, ten, two, and four, I know you know it, Tony? You water a new lawn 10 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 4 o'clock, that's the heat of the day. And the ideal was just, and it's true, you can't-
It works mushy.
Yeah, you can't put too much water on a new lawn.
And it does say that, I'm not doubting that for an established lawn, but, you know, and we're not trying to, you know, right now, today, folks, we're not discussing a green lawn, we're discussing saving our water, and if I get a green lawn for a little bit longer, I'm going to keep it, but if it gets to the point where I can't water, then I'm not going to have a green lawn, but I'm going to try to conserve the water to where I've got some water for the emergency uses, the other uses that, that not, you know, the essential uses.
And I'm kind of torn on this subject, and I'm sure, this was told to me by a guy years ago, and it just kind of clicked, you know, and I'm a horticulturist, I love trees and plants and love lawns, but I do realize we have to conserve. The guy told me, he said, you know, all the water we have on earth is here now, it's here in the ground, on the surface, in the air, in the clouds. We're not getting new water from outer space, we're not getting new water magically from here or there, all the water we have is here on earth, and we're never getting any more, we're just going to continue to use it, and recycle it. So, I mean, I'm all about conserving water, I hope I answered your question about the grass.
Yeah, I mean, I've read that several places, and I, you know, I've had people, well, we talked about the council meeting, you know, having 60 days or 30 days to get an established lawn, I, you know, if you, if it takes that long to establish it, something was wrong with the sod in the first place, or the soil wasn't meant to have any grass growing on it.
It wasn't.
And later on, you're going to, it's going to dry up, and you're not going to have a good lawn anyway, so-
So, what I'm hearing is, from all three of y'all, you water it seven to 10 days, and then you just go to your regular water, it's going to live, is that what y'all, is that what y'all three are saying?
Mr. Allen, when I, when I researched it, there, that was a maximum, you could probably get by in certain soil, maybe even less, and like Aaron said, probably some of the harder soil, it's going to take more. But, the thing is, I don't, I'm not discussing about growing a green yard here, we have an opportunity, we have the capability, but we have the capability right now to put some water on some of the lawns and to help out the builders. Later on, we won't even have that capability. We're headed in that direction.
We ain't going to have a lake.
Well, we're headed in that direction.
Yeah, and they ruined it.
And we won't make it any better by relaxing it and letting some people use more water than what the contingency plan, and, and right now, and I think somebody brought up the subject, there are people, you said somebody was watering the sidewalk, well, then he needs to be turned in, or she needs to be turned in, but we have neighbors, we have, my wife, she jumps on me every time I turn the water on, it's not supposed to be on, because people are telling on people now, because they understand the need. Those people that they are reporting, they don't understand it yet, they think that it's, it's something that's going to go bye-bye, but it's not. I do believe that we are going to be one of the many, many people in the Metroplex that's going to be in Stage Three before, before it's over.
Those of you that burn around in the 50s-
Mr. Perkel.
All I'm saying is, this, this was an everyday occurrence in West Texas and North Texas, because there was no water, period. That's when they were burning prickly pears to feed the cattle. What I'm saying is, we've got to worry about the humans, too. Look at the towns around us that have got, that have had basically no water, and they've had to go to other towns and everything. We've got to conserve, again, if we can help them, not hurt, but you don't know if you- Water is one of the most precious things. Just a little history, in West Texas, in '28, oil sold for $5 a barrel, water was $250 a barrel. So, all I'm saying is, but you can't keep people from watering by raising the price, because there's a person out there that's going to do it anyway.
I have a comment to make about that, too, Mayor.
Councilman Myers?
I did do a little bit of research myself, although I did it last, the end of last council meeting, and Alva, I agree, while I appreciate Mr. Allen's watering schedule and the statistics around how many gallons someone can water if they water every day to try to establish the yard, from what I understand from talking to other cities, as I was out and about this past week, is the biggest problem we have with that is enforcement. While we can, you know, advocate that the builders get these lawns in, the problem that we're going to have is who's going to monitor that they're watering every day, 10 minutes a day, and it just is very difficult, from talking to other cities, for them to enforce that. So, the question I had for them is, what are they doing? Those cities that you mentioned earlier are high build cities, they're still building homes out there.
Correct.
And so, what I was asking is, what are they doing to accommodate their builders, and these homes are still selling out there?
They have gone to the fact of where they've eliminated everything.
And that's what they, they did say that to me, that a lot of them are going to drought-resistant lawns, and so, I also listen to 1080 radio a lot, and today, Todd Staples released a statement about the $8 billion in losses that we've had to the state of Texas due to our drought. It's devastating to our state. In addition to Sunday's paper mentioning the fact that if we continue this drought, the Brazos River Authority is going to put another straw in our lake to cover Palapinto, I believe is mineral wells in that area. So, if we're in that situation in the next 30 days or so, that's what it sounded like, 30, 60 days, we really do need to conserve our water. But, I understand that our builders are still building homes, and they're building beautiful homes, from what I saw last weekend during tour, and they're, they're putting yards I guess it's just a double-edged sword, we've got to figure out, you know, and work with these builders to try to accommodate them, and not get us into Stage Three as well, whether it be educating them on some of these drought-resistant planting that I have heard from other builders around the other cities in town. But, my, my second concern is, is while we want to have these green lush yards, you know, we have a lot of brown, tall weeds in town that aren't getting watered either, and, and aren't getting mowed either. So, we have to come up with a plan that makes our city attractive to move here, buy a home here, and also drive in and see what we're looking at here, coming into town.
Could I comment on the-
Thank you, Councilman Person Myers. Go ahead, Aaron.
Seven days, you said you had read that if you water a lawn, seven days, it would be rooted first-
Seven to 10 days on a new, a newly lawn that was taken right out of the field.
Okay.
And when I say seven to 10 days, that's, that's soaking it, I mean, that's where you can't walk on it, it's just so mushy, you know, so-
Alright. I don't know, I'm going to have to say, I don't know if that to be a fact, because I have never done it. I've always watered a new lawn, probably two, three weeks to establish it.
And this is for Texas, I mean, I Googled all these for Texas, and that's-
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but if a builder comes in and builds a new lawn, or builds a new house, and puts a new lawn in right now, he can't water it every day anyway. So, there is no way to-
But he can soak it down pretty good with that 14 hours.
Yes, twice a week, okay.
And, and I'm not saying it's easy for him to do, because it's not easy, it's not, it's not going to be easy for me to keep a green yard right now, for some reason, it is staying green, I'm not, I've got a little deal watering out in front, but like I say, my backyard, I haven't hit it with a drop, and it's still green. But, we get into the contingency plan, or we get into Phase Three, and if we quit watering totally, I'm, I'm sure it'll go away, but maybe it's the type of soil, I don't know what it is, but, and there's lots of lawns like that, I've talked to people around the city, I've talked about people, but, and, and Ms. Myers had talked about, you know, the builders wanting to sell a beautiful home and everything, I challenge anybody that goes up to buy a house and says, wow, this is a beautiful home, I love your house, I want to buy it, but what's wrong with the yard? Now, if they don't know that we can't water, and that we're in a drought, then, then we need to educate them on that, I don't know where they're from, but when they come in to buy a house, that's the first thing I would say, as a builder, say, well, look, we got a little problem out here in the yard, and we don't know if it's going to go away or not, because we can't put a yard in right now, because we have no water to put on it, and you don't, we don't want to leave you with that responsibility, because once it does get established, then you got to keep it green. And it's not going to happen, because, so, here's your options, if you want to landscape it with drought-resistant, you want to put some stone, you want to put some cactus out there, there's a lot of other options, and research it, and here's, here's what we offer for you, you know, and I would promote that, because if, that would not be a question of mine, if I went to buy a house, I would know what the situation is, living right here, right now.
Well, and my final comment is, I've hand-watered my yard maybe twice a week for the last nine-plus months, and it looks great, probably one of the-
Probably overwatered, huh?
One of the nicest yards on our street, so-
You can do that.
My, my, my last comment I want to make is, there are a lot of irrigation folks in town that are, that are switching over to city water, especially on our street, it's several hundred dollars to do that, and there are many neighbors that are opting to do that. And as that goes on, I see the water supply going up.
Correct.
And I just think if people would get out and hand-water, and I work every day, there's a lot of people that don't, I see no reason why people need to convert their watering system over to a hand-water, I mean, over to a city watered system, when we're in this situation that we are in.
Can I ask one question? In Stage Two, what is the hand-watering rule? Any day, or just on the-
Pretty much, with hand-watering, yes. So, again, I mean, they have options.
So, the builders have the option of-
Without a nozzle, though.
Yeah, they can, yeah, they can have a nozzle or anything like that, but yes, they-
They can stick their thumb on it.
And that's their, and I think, I mean, I know, you know, as Councilperson Myers said, I mean, it does take some time, I did it, and same thing, my grass is completely green, and I did the same thing, I don't have an irrigation system, and it's the same thing, and I use hand-watering, and yes, it takes some time, but it does work.
Well, Council, we have discussed this, and I'm, I'm looking for a motion, I mean, I hope everybody takes into consideration everything that Alva's talked about, and everything that the council's talked about, but also consideration of, of what we need as a community to conserve our water, and for the, for the future, and the future meaning in the months ahead. So, with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor, I don't have a motion yet, but I do want to have that education here in a little bit, after we're done with-
Okay.
With what we've got at hand.
Okay.
I have a motion, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Well, after listening to you and Alva, and talking about seven days to 10 days on the watering to establish a new lawn, I make a motion that we do it, and based on what y'all are saying there, and do it for 14 days, then after that, they go into regular schedule. And that way, it's not going to use that much, nobody's going to be living the house for the first 14 days, after they do it anyway, probably, so, that way, the seven days is going to be established, extra seven for the fun of it, and then go to your regular two-day-a-week schedule, solves the problem.
So, Council, your, your motion is that we, that we put a, we put an amendment to the drought contingency plan, allowing new lawns, or is it?
Yeah.
New lawns to be watered for 14 days, and then go to the contingency plan two, or whatever contingency plan we're on. Now, you realize, if we're on contingency plan three, there is no watering.
No, it won't be, it would be null and void at that time, sorry.
Make, make the motion again, please.
Beg pardon?
Make the motion again, please.
I'll make a motion that we go and let them water on new construction, residential or commercial, for 14 days. Now, after 14 days, they go to whatever water schedule the city's on at that time, it's Stage Two, Stage Three, or whatever. That way, it gives them time to get the lawn established in seven days to 14 days.
One, one more clarification, the 14 days would be in the present stage we're at right now, because once we go into Phase Three, we have to redo everything.
That's what my motion said.
Okay.
Just to be clear, if you want to make an amendment, what your motion really needs The reason you don't have a resolution is because staff had no idea how to draft the resolution.
Right.
So, um, if that's what you desire to do, then I, then I think you should direct staff to draft the resolution and bring it back to you.
Okay, I change my motion to that, then. Let Wayne and the staff worry with it.
So you're, you're wanting to amend the, uh, you, you wanna make a motion, then, to amend this? So you wanna make an, a motion to discuss, to, uh, on the item on the agenda, to amend the drought plan, to allow for a new construction lawn to be watered for fourteen days, and then resume normal watering schedule? So you have to just say the, the, the amend the drought plan?
Exactly.
Okay.
And let Wayne and the staff take care of it. After fourteen days, they go back to whatever we're on.
But, but you understand, it has to go through the, the staff, and then it has to go through TCEQ again, and so it's, it's not like it happens immediately.
When do you think, Mayor, this would happen?
I don't know.
Wayne, when do you think this would happen, or is there, you're that growing up?
First way-
Yeah, we have to bring the resolution back to the council on the first, uh, meeting in July.
Right.
And then-
And then when you pass it, then it'll go to TCEQ.
Then what?
Then it will go to TCEQ.
Go to where?
To TCEQ.
So it might be August before we get this done.
It could be, Councilman Allen.
It'd be, or longer, yes.
Or longer.
Well, they shouldn't TCEQ, cause, shouldn't turn us down, 'cause they're asking for a billion gallons of water over here.
Well, what, what you're saying, though, Councilman Allen, that, but by the time that we get through to this, we could be in, we could be required to be in phase three.
Well, Mayor, you asked me not to make a motion-
I'm not, I'm just, I'm just-
You wanna go to stage three?
I'm just letting you know-
What difference does it make?
What the timeline is gonna be.
What difference it might go, I mean-
Hopped and done.
Probably wanna get a second on it, so I'm not worried about it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm looking for a second. You called it, Mr. Allen, it fails for lack of a second.
So re, reiterating, Mr. Alva.
Yes, sir.
The contractors have the option of watering with a sprinkling system on the two days allotted per week for any, for fourteen hours, I think that was-
Yes, sir.
Right.
Correct.
And then every other day of the week, they have the option of using a handheld hose or a, some kind of, uh, soaker hose?
A soaker hose you could, but it'd probably be better with a, just a regular hose, without a nozzle, though you can't have any kind of nozzle restricting or anything like that. So it has to be open hose, basically.
So they do have that option?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other motions?
Mayor, um, I wanna, I think the, the issue here tonight really is about conservation, and I think that probably most people walking in Kroger or HEB don't know the difference between stage two and stage, stage two and stage three, and I think it's incumbent upon us that we, we, we launch a campaign to educate people what that means. I took the liberty of having some postcards made up. Um, one that says, uh, stop before we go to stage three, one says, stop to the drop, and I think that it would be wise for us to send something similar, once we, we, we get with some, uh, some marketing people, uh, and send this to every single customer we have that's using city water. I'd also like to see half-page ads twice a month in the newspaper, so people can start to relate to what this means, if we don't conserve and we move into stage three, this is what's gonna happen.
Right.
And, um, so I don't know if I need a motion on that, or, or what, but that's-
That's not the item on the agenda right now, but you're, you're exactly right, we can, we can go forwards with some, some, and, and it's obvious that, now, I know mine's on my refrigerator, I don't know, Mr. Allen, if, where you've put yours at, or if anybody, but we've had them in the newspaper, we've had them on the websites, we've, uh-
We have it on our bills.